Okay, good morning, everybody. This is the town of Sherburne, Massachusetts, zoning board of appeals. It is June 4th, 2024. This is a deliberation session for the Farm Road Homes project. I'm the chair, Rick Novak. We're joined by members Jonathan Fitch, Zach McBride, and Todd Labby. Okay, so to recap, last time we talked a little bit about the title restriction and Jonathan, you had asked whether we could issue sort of an alternative decision. Saying we rule on ground X, but alternatively, we rule on ground Y. Town council said we cannot issue alternative decisions. We can go yes, no, and with conditions. So we need to talk about that a little bit. And I thought maybe we'd talk a little bit about water and sewer too. But first, on the restriction subject, Jonathan. I think we agreed when we were discussing this that it's not, as you call it, a jump ball.
Right.
If you and I were the detached judges ruling on it, we'd probably say, well, that looks like this restriction. Has enough likes that the property is not marketable now, if not outright enforceable. And so I wonder if maybe we can go back to the idea of maybe putting a condition on that if we otherwise approve. The condition be that they get a final resolution from a court of competent jurisdiction because I do agree with you, Jonathan, that it's not fair. To have people buying these units and then have them be surprised later.
That's right.
Could you live with that approach?
Yes, in short, I can live with that approach. I think that the issue has to be decided. If it's not going to be decided by us. If we can procedurally require that it be decided. And I take it that town council has indicated that that's an acceptable approach?
Well, it's an acceptable approach. I don't think town council said. I guarantee you that any particular condition will be enforceable. You know, maybe the developer team will run off to Hack or somebody else and say, you've got no right to have any position on this at all. Well. They can make that argument before judges and the town can argue the other way. But I think he was clear with me that to the extent we're going to deal with it, this conditioning, either outright denial. And then it's all over. We don't discuss anything else, or we deal with it through condition. Were the two proper procedural ways to proceed.
Okay.
If that's acceptable to you. Todd and Zach, unless you have objections, I think I'm going to propose that at least for working. Working theory purposes that we have a condition. That the title restriction be fully resolved by court of competent jurisdiction. Jonathan, you and I can come up with the right ways to say that, not something to appeal. No backseas, no funny business.
Yeah.
I see heads nodding.
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense to me. Especially understanding now kind of the bounds within which we have to operate. Either approved, deny, or condition. Yes, I'm on board with the condition.
Okay, great. Zach, I will ask you to speak up if you object, but otherwise I will take your silence for assent.
Yeah, assent.
Okay, great. All right. So we know how we're going to handle that. Water, public water supply. We had some initial discussions last time. Everybody's homework was to go back and see what Tetra Tech and the applicant and the neighbors had said. I've done that to some extent. I don't know if you all have. What I took away from my review was that. The developer essentially presented the matter as being wholly within the purview of DEP and that there was nothing for anybody else to say. And that Tetra Tech deferred to that. Without saying they agreed with it. The abutters, of course, go a different direction, saying the threshold for public water supply is 25 people and this is going to have 152 people. You know, over five times the limit. If the developer were speaking on this call, they'd say, well. DEP has spoken. They made their preliminary determination. Nobody else can say anything else. How do we feel about that? And by the way, I'm not submitting that for the purposes of saying I agree with that argument. I'm just saying that's an argument we should discuss. Mr. Fitch, Mr. Labby?
Sure. Well, I did review the Tetra Tech. Letter and. I didn't find in there, Rick, any. Really strong. Statement questioning the safety of a private water system. Safety and health concerns. So. They. They pointed out that there was a. An issue. But they. Decided not to. They say, we are not advocating one way or the other on a mass DEP decision. However, through discussion with DEP, this type of water supply has been allowed in several developments in the state, including one previously in the town of Sherburne. That's referring to the public water supply. So. Seemed like they were. Less than conclusive that. Private water supply was. Appropriate.
Todd, what were your thoughts? Yeah, I didn't find a whole lot of insight in Tetra Tech's comments on public versus private water. I think there was some reiteration of some of the. Data points or bullet points that had been shared over the course of the public hearing by both the applicant and others, such as the Board of Health. After re-reviewing the letters and the comments and. Yeah, I feel as though Tetra Tech's position on it was a bit noncommittal and I don't think it was necessarily in their purview to land one way or the other. And I think that there are other considerations and other inputs for us to weigh when making that decision.
Okay, thank you. Mr. McBride, to the extent you can hear us and wish to speak up, do you have something to say on the water issue?
Uh, nothing new. I still think that the public water supply is the best path forward, given. All the material aspects of this proposed project.
Okay, thank you. And that's kind of where people were settling last time. I agree with all of you that Tetra Tech is kind of a big meh on this. They neither come out and say, wow, this is the best idea in the world. We give it our ringing endorsement. It's the only way to do this. But neither do they say it's unsafe and or severely criticize it. They defer into the developers' claim that. It was exclusively, excuse me, wholly in the purview, close quote, of DEP per the applicant application in last September. The, another issue we ought to deal with. There are claims by the development team that the public water supply here would be unequal treatment. Those personally, I do not find particularly weighty. There are exactly zero. Facilities in town that serve 152 people that aren't a public water supply. And the only similarly sized project in town is also a 40B at the Fields of Sherburne, and that is a public water supply. So I think the unequal treatment argument, at least as to me, doesn't. We won't say it doesn't hold water, but we'll say I'm not very persuaded by it. Jonathan, how do you feel legally on the unequal treatment argument?
Well, I agree with what you just said. This is. Not necessarily one of a kind, but close to one of a kind. And I think it has to be assessed on its own merits. And it's not appropriate to assess it in comparison to a single family dwelling. Across the street or anywhere nearby. It's, as you said, 125 people, 25 units. And the only thing we have to compare it with. Is a field, which is a public water supply. So that kind of. I think. Takes away from any argument of unequal treatment. So I think. Still comes back to the question. Of safety and health and. Seems like the biggest argument that the developer has made is. Public water supply is more expensive. Doesn't seem to be any. Much dispute about that. But. And to an extent. I can understand why. A developer would choose the lowest cost approach. But the care and maintenance of a private water supply over a period of time. Particularly for the affordable units to. To constantly be. Testing the water content to make sure there aren't any problems, fixing any problems that might arise. I mean, I was, I think you mentioned the testimony of. The woman. Who lived at the other development of Mr. Murchison in town.
Sarah Raggy from Abbey Road.
Yes. Mrs. Raggy, I thought was very convincing about the problems they've had. The private water supply. She seemed to be. Feel very confidently about her position that it was a poor idea for a collective system.
Yeah, in fairness to the development team, I think they would say it's more than just cost. I think they would say, if you do a public water supply, the wellhead offset protection areas. Make it impossible for me to fit my project on this site. And while that is true, I think Mr. Fenway and others made the good counterpoint, which is, well, you chose the site and you sized the project. So. We talked a little bit when we were first discussing water about. How far we could go in terms of trying to make the private water supply function like a public water supply and where the. Where the. Where the going gets tough is if you said, well, we'll just call it a private water supply, but we'll make all of the units interdependent and cross redundant. And cross connected, and if one fails, the other can support the other. And the problem is that violates the. The private water supply rules. Each public waters, each, excuse me, each private water supply has to sort of stand on its own independently.
Yeah.
There's a good reason for those rules. And that same independence is what scares me. Whether it's a market rate unit or a series of market rate units or the affordable units, if one of these wells goes down. Those people are in very, very deep trouble and there will be nobody else to help them. And I guess me the willies. So. I get another question we have to face is, do we think we have the authority to say, we're glad that DEP made this preliminary determination, but as a matter of. Local public health and safety, we think this needs to be a public water supply. I'm sure that the applicant team will argue that maybe we don't have that right. Gentlemen, how do you feel about it?
Well, it's a health and safety issue, as I said earlier. And. If we are convinced based upon. The testimony we received from. Well, from everybody in this proceeding that there is a significant risk. To some of the homeowners in this very dense development. That they will have difficulty getting water, which is. Obviously, a primary concern everyone has. I think it's very. Legitimate for us to make that call. I mean, the inability to get water dependably. In foreseeable circumstances is most certainly a health and safety issue.
Okay. And Mr. McBride, Mr. Labby, do you feel the same way differently?
I feel the same way. You know. Access to clean water seems to be a cornerstone or one of the cornerstones of basic health and safety. You know, for all the reasons that we've already discussed here, not the least of which is the fact that our Board of Health. The local authority. In charge of safeguarding health and safety has also recommended a public water supply. I think that that also needs to be weighed. I think it's within our mandate.
Mr. McBride?
I echo the sentiments of my colleagues here on the board. You know, I think. The Board of Health's opinion is, should be weighted heavily, given their experience in town with the. I also think that, you know, the applicant has created a. Space issue by the very nature of his proposed project, the density, the density issue. The density is what is driving. Obviously, the majority of our concerns. If this was, if this proposal was less dense, we'd have less issue with water. And so I think, and it would also give him the opportunity to put in a public water supply more easily with the well offsets. I also think that, you know, there was a, there was a. A comment made by the developer in one of the last meetings were foreclosed around an easement or an assurance. I'm not sure of the right. Term with respect to the Conservation Commission allowing him to use their land as sort of the buffer zone, which I think Michael Lesser. Indicated would not be an issue potentially from the Conservation Commission. So it actually looks like there may be a possibility of fitting a public water supply on the site. So I personally feel that, you know, we should. Follow our local board, take the intimations of the commission that would have the ability to potentially facilitate. The public water supply. And I think our local residents' experience, which, you know, I think. The lived experience is important, and I think that we should weigh our local residents' comments heavily as well.
Yeah. All right. So if we, and by the way, I also agree with all that and I'm aligned with the three of you. So if we want to do a public water supply here, then we have another decision, which is how do we. Implement that in our decision. One way to do it would be to say, well, we're turning the project down because it doesn't have a public water supply. You won't be surprised to hear me say, I don't love that outcome. I don't love straight turn downs without a really solid ground. It invites Hack to second guess us. I'd be much more comfortable. And I'll throw this out for discussion, that we condition the project on being designed to function as a public water supply, whether it's through getting easements with the Conservation Commission or whoever else. That's up to the developer to how to do it. We can't tell the Conservation Commission to give them an easement. We can't tell them to go get an easement. We can say, come up with a design that works. And you can either move your wells around or make the project smaller or whatever. But that would be my sort of working proposal to you guys is that we make a condition be that the project be redesigned to have a, function as a public water supply.
Just to say it, Mr. Chair, that would. Based on the inputs that we've received from the applicant and others, that would then imply a rather significant redesign of the entire site. Would that not? Necessitate essentially a reset of review of the project because the project would then consist of something that we have not reviewed?
Well. They might then have to come back. I think the develop, I would expect the development team to react to this condition by saying. It's not a valid condition. You have no right to do it. It's essentially saying, make the project smaller, which you don't have the right to do. And by the way, you're superseded by DEP. I think those would be their arguments. I don't think those arguments are necessarily persuasive to me, but I think that's. Just sort of looking into the forecast. Of how it's likely to go. You know, maybe it goes to Hack and it gets remanded to us after Hack decides this, but. Just speaking personally, I'm very concerned about this failure of one of the private wells. And if someone is going to tell the town, we have to say yes to that, I'd like it to be somebody other than this board.
I, yeah, no argument. I don't disagree with you, Mr. Chair. I'm just, I'm just trying to think about.
Oh, yeah.
The sequence, the sequence of how this would then play out if that were then upheld and forced, et cetera. Okay.
Yeah, and you know, I'm in the development business and have been. There may be backup plans that they have. You know, on the shelf that they haven't showed us to convert this to a public water supply. When we were working on the Fields of Sherburne, it was, oh, it could never be a public, never, never, never could possibly, never, would never work. Heard that, you've heard the protestations. And then as the development changed, it was in their, so they said, wait, wait, we just came up with this idea. We can do it with a public water supply. We don't, we don't know what flexibility there is on the applicant side and we can't speculate. They may, there may be a backup plan. There may not be. We don't know.
Well, I mean, it's not, it's not even speculation. They did present. An alternative plan.
I'm sorry?
Am I misremembering? There was an alternative plan put forward. We couldn't consider it.
Oh, you mean the apartment building plan?
Yes.
Yeah, 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 yeah. They might have a dozen other alternative plans. I thought you meant that they, that they had an alternative public water supply with this project.
No, no, sir, no, sir.
Okay, all right, we're aligned. Zach, are you hearing all this? Where are you on this? View of whether or not we do a condition and how we do it?
I think the condition is the prudent path. I think. I don't know if it's, I don't know if the condition is, you know, a one liner, saying it has to be a public water supply, or. Do we have to spell out all the attributes, you know, of a public water supply? Because I'm not sure procedurally if we can just force that. Public water supply. To your point, do we have the authority to force that? Or do we have the authority to force the merits of a public water supply?
Interesting question. And maybe it's that we. Put in. As I'm thinking about it, I don't think there's any magic to being labeled a public water supply by DEP. The things that we care about are the things that I heard the residents care about, which is that it be, well, multiply redundant, cross connected. You know, if one fails, the others can step in. I'm not using the right term, but I'll use redundant. Because that's the one that comes into my feeble brain right now. And maybe we do, we spell out those. Those attributes because if they can come up with a public, private water supply waiver and DEP says their well offsets are okay, and it has those attributes. I would be fine with it.
Yeah, I think we, I think we need to focus on the substance of what the public water supply gets us in the conditioning and not just state. It has to be a public water supply. That way, the health and safety issues are what's at issue and not the classification of what it is.
That's a really, really good point. I wish, it's such a good idea. I'm embarrassed I didn't have it myself. And I suggest to the rest of our group that we adopted that the condition be that. And we can spell this out in our draft that. The water supply, whether it's technically a public or a private, have the following attributes. Now, I think we should be realistic. The redundancy and cross connection and everybody helps pay for it, I think. From a regulatory standpoint are going to be problematic for DEP, but that's, that's an issue for the developer and DEP to discuss. But I don't think we technically care about whether it's being labeled a public water supply. Do we agree on that?
Yes, the labels, the labels are relevant to me. It's the activity that's important.
It's the, it's the, it's the performance attributes is what you're saying.
Correct.
Yep, I like that. Okay. So again, nothing is, nothing is cast in concrete yet, but it sounds like we are of one mind that. We want this to have all the performance attributes in terms of reliability, redundancy, and cross support.
And testing.
And of course, testing, yeah. I think the developer had said that the testing, the testing regimen was not really. In dispute here. I think, I think they'd said they were willing to do a private.
I believe they were open to some testing and while that gets us part of the way there, using private wells, it certainly doesn't. Capture the other aforementioned things that we're looking to guarantee.
Yep, totally, totally, totally with you. All right, are we ready to move on from water to. To Septic for a bit? Or do we want to discuss water further? Because I think we've got preliminary resolutions on title and water. You gentlemen are willing to work on to, work on to Septic?
Yes.
All right. So just to, just to set the table and recap. The applicant team, Creative Land and Water Engineering, said. Septic is fine, works great. Scott Horstley's November 5th. Letter said, no, it doesn't. The nitrates are too high. Tetra Tech, after a lot of back and forth, said, well, we think it meets the standard, given that it's an approved Septic Tech. Star 4.5 times 3 makes it a star 13.5 enhanced. Enhanced system. Obviously, Creative Land and Water Engineering works for the applicant, so that might inform their conclusion. Mr. Horstley works for a project opponent. That might inform his conclusion. Tetra Tech is a theoretically neutral working for us. They probably come to the table without too much agenda one way or another. We are not wired to defer to any of them. And of course, our own Board of Health is, I think, not in favor of this project here, thinks it's too experimental, too novel. What are your gentlemen's thoughts?
I think specifically, the matter of the nitrogen loading and the water mounting remains to be a bit of a contested topic, I guess I would say. We have heard that there are positions to follow the science and follow the facts. It appears that we have. Some different approaches by way of science and some different facts being put forth. So the Board of Health is on record stating that they're not. At this point confident in the nitrogen loading analysis, which does give me some unease here. And similarly, one of the abutters experts has put forward some analysis stating that there's also. Nitrogen loading risk as well to the abutters and to the local residents. How we rectify that with the applicant's analysis, with Tetra Tech's comments? I haven't yet sorted in my mind, but those are two of the. Those are the opposing positions, I guess, that we now have to weigh.
Yeah, right. I thought Mr. Horstley's testimony was very convincing, persuasive. On the risk of. I believe he focused on nitrogen loading.
I agree with Jonathan.
Yeah, I would agree. I don't, I don't have reason to not believe. And certainly, you know, his credentials as an expert and his experience with mass DEP. On Title V matters also lends credibility, further credibility to his analysis.
Yeah, so I went back and corrected my inarticulate description of the STAR system. So I guess my understanding, I went and read the DEP just for correction in the last deliberation. For the DEP website, it seems like at this point, you know, my concerns around the use of the STAR system, even in succession, so to speak. Making it the STAR 13.5. Is, it seems like it's, you know, there's a lot of indicia that it is safe in terms of, you know, from a. Is, it seems like it's, you know, there, there's a lot of indicia that it is safe in terms of, you know, from a Mast D E P perspective, I think where I have concern is the. The differences of opinion of the nitrate um, loading as a result of that system from, you know, the Board of Health versus other experts, and then. You know, I, you know, taking uh, Mister Horace Lee's um, letter into account, I guess. Where I, where I'm at sort of procedurally is. What conditions could we impose here? Or are we at a binary issue, I guess, is where I'm trying to figure out in my head, um. If there's any conditions we could come up with here, um, the one condition I was trying to toss around last week was. You know, an an approval from D E P on the system, but I don't think that is going to be. Uh, determinative with respect to the nitrogen loading, so. I'm going to turn it back over to the rest of the group here to think about, you know, I guess, what we might be able to do for conditions if there is a concern.
Right, well, where 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 Zach is going is where I was going to try to take us next, which is, okay, so we're all worried about this, what the heck do we do? Uh, we do have to make a decision. This is why we get paid the big bucks. Of course, we get paid no bucks at all. Um, uh, we're we're unpaid volunteers, but. Um, and yet we need to do our jobs anyway, um, uh, our choices, well, our choices here are. Uh, we can turn the project down because we think it's a, it's a. Threat to public health and safety because the nitrate loading, because it flunks nitrate loadings, because we believe the Horace Lee view of the world. Um. That's not illegal, immoral, or fattening if we vote that way. Um, obviously, the applicant will, will, will appeal that and say, no, we we saw it wrong and they'll. It'll, it'll get marched off the the hack, uh, and then maybe to the appeals court afterwards, who knows? Um. Is there a condition that we could do to try to fix this? Again, obviously, I'd I'd like to stay away from a turn down on this issue, given that the um. Uh, evidence is not uh, not unambiguous. Um, there's, there's evidence, evidence both ways and strong arguments both ways, and both. Both sides say, well, of course, I've got science on my side, so follow the science. Um, any thoughts on conditions? Not sure how we fix this. I mean, we. We could say, send it up to to Nobus and see if Nobus is persuaded that the mounting passes. Um, Nobus being a um. Uh, another engineering company, they happen to be based in New Hampshire, but they've got a lot of uh, sort of credibility for neutrality in this area of town. Among the fields of Sherburne.
It.
Um, go ahead.
Uh, I I thought, a- as as an option, I thought the Board of Health laid out some. Decent recommendations in terms of having an impartial third party come on site and do some additional analysis.
Okay, so that's one thing we could do. Other, other thoughts, other ideas? Hmm. Uh, resounding round of applause for the, for the third party.
Hyp- hypothetically, i- if we. Get a third party and they come up with a number in between the two delta points, right? Wh- where does that leave us? You know, I think that's where. Um.
I I was just putting it out there, Zach, I I wa- I welcome all all viewpoints. I was simply putting it out there as as an option. I'm not saying that the outcome is going to be. Any uh, easier for us to to, or anybody to make a determination based on. I don't see what what other limitations or conditions we could place on the system, because. The the essence of the the issue as being represented by the abutters expert is essentially the conditions on site. We cannot change as well as the density of discharge. We cannot change, so I I'm not sure where that leaves us in terms of conditions.
Yeah, is isn't the um, and we're, and we're all just wrestling with the same thing, but I think what. Todd is trying to say, and tell me if I'm mis uh, misconstruing you, um, is. The the developer has brought a certain size project to the table. They've designed this. Apparently sophisticated, apparently uh, effective system to deal with it. Um, and the question is, given the rest of the site topography and and the nearby receptors. Does that provide us, is that likely to provide a safe outcome or not? And 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 we've got conflicting, um, uh, uh, projections. Um, from Horace Lee and from Creative Land and Water and and Tetra Tech as to how well. That system with those septic loads will function in this environment. Is that. A fair recharacterization of what you're trying to say, Todd?
Yes.
Okay. So if that's the question, one solution might be have a condition that they have to get a um. Have to fund Nobus or, uh, you know, I'm I'm no shell for Nobus. I've got no interest in that company. They've just done good, good work in the past. Some uh, disinterested, um. In fact, septic expert to to do their own. Diligence on on this system, on this site. And I think that person should, if we're going to go this way, be provided with all the materials that we have. Um, because essentially, this is, this is like in real estate when we have a battle of appraisals. You know, a first appraiser says it's worth X. Second appraiser working for another party says it's worth Y, and the third appraiser is supposed to unpack it all and say. Here's where it really comes out.
X plus Y divided by two.
Well, that, that that's the lazy appraisers way to do it. And I'm not saying that doesn't happen.
Yeah.
Um. But. Wh- wh- where are we on this?
Let me ask you, Rick, uh. With the condition you just suggested. Do do we have to stipulate that that uh. Nobus's investigation and conclusions come in at or below a certain level? I mean, do we, we, we ask them, yeah, basically yes or no questions that they have to answer?
I I I think that's right, you know, and and I'm only using Nobus as a placeholder. I don't think they're necessarily, I think we would, we would. Design attributes, describe attributes of this, of this third party neutral. Um, and maybe Nobus hits them, or maybe they don't, um, and I don't really care, um. But I think we'd, we'd have to have them re- reaching, I think we have to give them a specific thing, which is, is it your opinion that. The uh, nitrates uh, at at the property line will be. More or less than probably ten micrograms per liter. I'm just pulling that out there, but. Uh. But but I I agree with you, not articulating it very well, Jonathan, I'm sorry, but I'm trying to say, I agree with you. We need to give them a yes or no question.
Yeah. Well, I'll just say that I for one am very concerned about this issue. Um, if we get it wrong. Uh, the consequences, I think, would be very uh, difficult. The town, the neighbors. And uh. Again, this is a situation that is the result of the developers choosing and 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 the developers plan. Um. He has proposed a different kind of a system for the. Apartment complex, uh, which seemed to be more acceptable to some of the. Public. Uh, but uh. Now, you got, that's, my my feeling is that this really is important and conditioned uh. With uh, an analysis by a neutral third party. With respect to specific questions. And if. The answer to all the questions isn't yes, then. Um. That, they don't get their permit.
Mister McBride, Mister Labby, how do you feel about that?
Uh, from a procedural standpoint, are we drafting the questions to the third party as part of the conditions?
I, uh, uh, fa- fair question. I I think my intent, as I'm listening to what John said and turning it over my own brain, I think the condition is more like. You don't get your building termit, permit until you provide to the board. A report from consultant beating attributes A, B, C, D, E. Um, concluding, um, reaching conclusions one, two, three, four, five with respect to the output of this system. In this location. Am I sort of on the same wavelength you are, John?
Yes.
Okay, so Zach, something like that.
Okay.
Todd, would that work for you?
I I think so, um, Jonathan, I want to make sure I'm I'm understanding you correctly. Uh, it, you you've expressed serious concern on this topic, and I think we we all share that serious concern. Um, would, would a condition of this nature address that concern? Or do you view this as a, uh, uh, is there a more, a more direct way to address the concern?
Well, I'm, I'm satisfied that that this condition would address, you know, the concern I have. I'd feel better about it. Uh, if a neutral third party comes in and says. Hey, this works great. There is, there isn't a problem with uh. Uh, water quality.
Mm-hmm.
Nitrogen loading or. Um, et cetera.
Yeah, Todd, that.
Seems to approve too, sorry.
The um, Todd, it's a good, smart, fair question. How would we feel if this came back either way? And I think if it, if it came back with, um, you know, uh, neutral expert asked the right question, comes back and says. Uh, I I I I think this is fine. I think Creative Land and Water Engineering has it exactly right. It's going to work as well. Um. You know, I'd still worry about this, but at least I'd feel better that we've done our job and um. If 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 God forbid, we're wrong on it, uh, we'll, we'll ask the right people the right questions. That's my position.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Because we owe, we owe to the applicant to say yes if we can, if it is backed safe, or or or.
I feel similarly. We are trying to find a way to say yes.
Alright.
So the um, the condition would be clear that. The third party's job was basically to prepare a report to us on these issues? Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think there's a, you know. It will, it will stun you, Jonathan, to know that sometimes the devil is in the details of writing things down.
Yeah. Shocked.
Yes, I know that never happens to litigators, but that happens to us on the deal side all the time. So I think, I think we need to do a little, little crafting um, on this, and and maybe I'll take a shot at that, or you, or you can take a shot at that if you wish. Um. But yeah, I think we need to, as 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 part of our discussion, take a look at how we would write this, how we, how we would write both of these conditions.
Mm-hmm.
Um. That takes us to the category of everything else. Which is stormwater, wetlands, um, a whole, whole bunch of things that many of which Tetra Tech weighed in on, many of which. Um, individuals weighed in on, um. It's eight forty-six, so I don't think we want to try to mill through all of those this time. We've got another session, I think, next Monday. If if I've got that correctly, um.
Yes, next Monday.
So, um. Of of those other issues, um. A lot of them. I would, I'd propose that we, like on site design, that we follow Sept- Septics, Tetra Tex. That we follow Tetra Tex guidance to us, because I think they did a pretty good job going through the plans and saying, yeah. Make sure the fire department weighs in on this, make sure there's a condition on that. But a lot of those basic site design blocking and tackling. At least I felt was pretty well covered and is probably not uh, going to be a subject of. Major um, commentary from 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 the board, other than implementing. The implements, uh, so, uh, other than implementing these suggestions of Tetra Tech, so, other than. Stormwater, groundwater, and wetlands, which are, I think are more sensitive topics that we need to talk about, because there's been a lot of input. From town boards and other people, um. Are you gents pretty comfortable on the site design? Some, assuming the developer came in and said, guess what, I have in my pocket. A magic unimpeachable expert on the ni- the nitrates issue, and here's their report. And by the way, I meant to tell you all along, I had a backup redesign that made this a public water supply or functions like a public water supply. And here's that, um. That would be. And and it is, and his other pocket, he pulls out, by the way, here's a decision from the S J C on the deed restriction, and and that's done. Um, what else would we have about which we were unhappy, if those issues were magically solved?
But I think the current drainage issue on the street is an issue, uh, particularly in the winter months, I'm. I think that, you know, there needs to be adequately, the developer needs to adequately address. Um, the runoff that's happening, um, you know, really from, from the site as well as the fact that. Um, I think the, you know, I think the pond, I think the buffer zones uh, need to be. More strongly enforced around that isolated wetland, um, that seems to be potentially, you know. Growing in size as we get a little wetter and a little bit wetter, wetter cycle, um, and I think that. You know, there's just a tremendous opportunity for uh, pollution, given the proximity and density, so I I think that we need to focus on, you know, the. The uh, the drainage on the street and as well as the the buffers.
Mm-hmm. Good points, both.
So 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 maybe I'd suggest to this group that our homework for next time is to. Mill, just, just as we did in preparation for this one, mill back through the water filings and the sewer filings. Um, if people would mill back through the um, the filings on the stormwater. And runoff and groundwater and wetlands issues, just so that next time we can sort of make that a central focus and and sort of. Try to come up with a a working list of what we're going to want to add for conditions, um. I I will tell you right now, I didn't see anything on those lists. For me, that was going to be a turn the project down, was going to be more like a condition, make sure this is fixed, make sure that's fixed. Um, but it is what it is. If in the course of reviewing that, you see something that you think, well, wait a second, this is a, this is a turn down issue. Let's discuss it. Or or if you feel it's all fine as proposed by the applicant, that's legitimate too.
Okay, thank you.
Um, alright, well. I'd I'd entertain a motion to to adjourn pending uh, Monday's meeting, unless. Unless other people have other suggestions, we can let Zach get off in his, off in his trip to, you're, you're headed to London, right, Zach?
Oh, no, that's next, that's next week. Uh, what time is our, what time is our uh, meeting on Monday, by the way?
Uh.
Eight o'clock.
I think, eight A M, I think.
I will similarly be in transit uh, during that meeting, unfortunately.
It's alright.
Okay, well, thanks for making the effort.
We 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 appreciate your availability. Um. Okay, um, anybody want to move to adjourn?
I'll move to adjourn, uh.
Second. I have, I have, I have other alligators chewing on me, so I need to get onto my other, my other stuff. Um, alright, it's been moved and seconded that we adjourn, uh, this this discussion, uh, uh, is is not an end of the uh. Uh, deliberations, uh, next deliberation session is next Monday at eight. Um, moved and seconded, any further discussion on the motion to adjourn? On favor, say aye, do it by roll call. No backvotes, aye.
Bitch, aye.
Labby, aye.
McBride, aye.
Alright, we're done for today. Thank you, everybody, and thank you all the attendees for your attention, as always.
Have a good day. Thanks, guys.
Thank you all.
Thanks, G D, for running the show.
Thank you.
Bye.